Whoopsie, whoopsie. We're good? We're good? Okay. The council meeting of May 21st will come to order. Good evening. Would I ask that all in attendance turn off or silence your electronic devices? And if you would please stand to honor God and country. Father, in a spirit of community as we embark on the work of your city, we pause at this second meeting in May to remember those who have given the greatest gift to our nation: their lives. Thank you for those who have served and sacrificed ensuring our freedom to gather in a free nation. Father, this evening we also lift Thomas Dunn, his family, and all at heart that have been impacted by the senseless killing. We pray keen to sermon and wisdom as the organization strives to strengthen safety. Lord, we pray for heart change. May negativity, hatred, and anger be replaced by understanding, compassion, and unity. Let our work this evening be self-sacrificing, good for others, and good for your ultimate glory. Amen. We will now pledge our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. As we open up this evening's meeting, I would ask Ms. Gallo, Clinical Director, Ms. Kraft, Principal, and Ms. Eisenberg, all from Focus Academy, to please approach the podium. The Focus Academy Community Partnership Transition Program has successfully completed its second year. The goal of this program is for Focus Academy to partner with organizations in the community in order to provide students the opportunities to learn key skills necessary to succeed in the workplace. Students in the transition program are closely assessed for their talents and affinities and subsequently matched with internship responsibilities in various community agencies. This year, the Focus Academy Partnership Transition Program involved placing 31 students at various agencies in the community. In addition to the City of Temple Terrace departments, that includes City Hall, our fire department, Public Works, the Family Recreation Center, Omar K. Lightfoot, and the library, other agencies in the community participating in the program include St. Vincent de Paul, Five Star Pizza, and Christ Our Redeemer Lutheran Church. The Focus Academy Community Transition Program has been an outstanding success. The students involved in the program have proven to be dedicated in their assigned duties and very professional in their demeanor. They have honed their communication skills, practiced personal accountability, and enhanced their task-oriented attention to detail. The city would like to recognize each of these students for the valuable service they have provided while in this program. Their dedication and positive attitudes in performing their respective job duties serve as a model for the outstanding service that the city prides itself on. This evening, I am honored to be calling up the students. And I will come down to make it easier for them. But I would ask you to come up and stand alongside me as you're called. First, Brianna Athens. Congratulations Brianna, and stay right here with me. You can just stand right here, we're gonna have excitement. Christina Ames. Mia DePalma.
Thank you guys.
Cody's room.
She's not here. She's not here. You didn't make it.
We'll make sure we get Cody's room.
Don't worry.
Grant Hartman. Ivan Harley. Might be trying to get through security. We don't know. Because we have some livestock animals here tonight, it's very high.
That livestock animal.
Tyleseh Hayes.
Not here today.
Matthew Nigro. Francesca Rosa. Kate Rosenkrantz. I am so blessed. Austin Shune. Yes? Antonio Smiley. You couldn't make it there. Jack Webb. Tyler Weston. And he's got a few more for me, don't you? Thank you so much. Elizabeth Eisenberg. Daniel Vignes. And Christina Ossamini. And already tell us how you want. And I would ask all of the directors, including Mr. Stevenson, who employed our students, if you will please come forward to be in the picture because the students have already told me how special you were. And we'd like to take a second. Get a little closer. Just again, here we go. Katie, do back behind your camera. Daniel, open up your certificate. All right, everybody look here. One, two, three, we're gonna take a couple, so keep your smiles down to change. Open yours up. We still want to see your faces. Our two sixth, have a picture with Josh the Otter. Josh the Otter. Josh the Otter. You are very welcome. Oh, I am. Thank you for remembering. Thank you. And I would ask if Ms. Gallo or Ms. Kraft would like to say anything about our students and the program in its second year.
I'll keep it short. Just want to say thank you guys so much for your dedication to our school. The CBT Training Program is really an integral part of our transition program and it really gives our students opportunities that they wouldn't have otherwise. So thank you very much for investing in our kids and helping us to prepare them for the adult world. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, I would ask if Eagle Scout Joseph David Witherington would approach the podium. Good evening, Joseph, and congratulations. This evening, the City of Temple Terrace presents this Certificate of Recognition to you for earning the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest advancement in Boy Scouting. Joseph recently earned his Eagle Scout rank through the Florida Gulf Bridge Council of the Boys and Girl Scouts of America. He was a member of Boy Scout Troop 120 and a student at Florida College Academy. Joe's Eagle Scout Community Service Project involved rebuilding and refurbishing an outdoor garden area for the younger students at Florida College Academy. This was an honorable and a dedicated endeavor and demonstrated his commitment to the community and his desire to make a tangible difference. These values are intrinsic to scouting and set a great example for his peers. We honor and salute Joe for the attainment of such a prestigious goal as Eagle Scout. Congratulations, Joseph.
Thank you.
And would you like to introduce us to your guests who are with you this evening and say a few words?
Yes ma'am. These are my parents, David and Karen Witherington. I want to thank them especially. You know, without their help throughout the years, I would not have had the opportunity to go through scouting and be here today as an Eagle Scout. So thank you to them, and thank you to y'all as well for making Temple Terrace such an amazing city to live in.
Thank you, don't go anywhere. If Public Works Director for Public Utilities Troy Tinch and Public Works Director Operations and Maintenance Ray LeBlanc would approach the podium. Good evening, gentlemen. A proclamation of the City of Temple Terrace celebrating National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities into the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Temple Terrace. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Temple Terrace to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas where the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it proclaimed that I, Mel Herado, Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, do hereby designate the week of May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Association Week. Congratulations, gentlemen. Would you like to say a few words?
Madam Mayor, City Council, I wanted to thank you very much for this proclamation. It means a lot to myself and staff to be recognized on such a stage. Just take a minute to speak about that staff. These are the folks that are out there on a daily basis, making sure that our roadways are safe to drive on, making sure those potholes are filled, they're repairing sidewalks, they're repairing stormwater inlets, they're repairing stormwater pipes, they're trimming trees, they're picking up our solid waste, they're picking up our recycling. Every day, day in and day out, without fail. And it would be nice if we had an entire month or an entire year to thank them for that, but we have a week, and we're gonna do just that. We're gonna thank them for those efforts. I'm very proud of my group. I'm proud to be part of this department, and I'm very happy to be receiving this recognition on their behalf. Thank you very much.
I like good news. I can't hold it back. Last Thursday, after a long miserable wait, we took delivery of our commercial front end load truck. You will see it over about the next two weeks, you'll see it on the street. You won't be able to miss it. I know it's a garbage truck, but it's beautiful. Wait till you see it. One of the things that briefly, almost three years back with the city, I gotta compliment Charles. Not as a city manager, but as a person, because he presents opportunities. And I'm working on taking the opportunities, matching them with the abilities of the people. The staff, the residents, everybody. And without that, at the starting line, you're never gonna finish nothing, so. I could talk all night, but I'll quit while I'm ahead. Look for that truck.
Yes. Sorry, this is the supervisor of our streets department, Larry Loester. And this is our new inspector for engineering, Patrick Love.
Well, thank you, welcome. Dexter Lewis and Josh the Otter would please come forward. Dexter and Josh, good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for being in attendance to receive this proclamation from the City of Temple Terrace in honor of National Water Safety Month. Whereas Temple Terrace, Florida recognizes that providing formal swimming lessons and water safety education for children and their caregivers ensures the health and well-being not only of our children, but for all residents. And whereas, as a community, we understand the essential role that protecting our children from 100% preventable death from accidental drowning is everyone's responsibility. And we recognize the significant investment made by the Children's Board of Hillsborough County in the Children's Board Mobile Swim Program, which provides swimming lessons and water safety education by bringing lifeguards and swim instructors into apartment complexes and neighborhood association pools to teach lifesaving skills to the children in those communities, as well as Safe Kids of Greater Tampa for providing ongoing education to prevent needless drowning deaths. And whereas, we recognize that it takes a collaborative effort among neighbors, nonprofit organizations, community groups, first responders, faith-based organizations, elected officials, schools, and businesses to be advocates for water safety education. And whereas, the citizens of Temple Terrace understand the vital importance of providing access to water safety education and programs to all families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks, beaches, or lakes. Be it proclaimed that as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, I do hereby designate May 2019 as National Water Safety Month. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
And Dexter, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and for the council, for all of your help with making May National Water Safety Month. Unfortunately, last year, we had an influx in child deaths due to drowning. There were 13 deaths throughout Hillsborough County. So we're just grateful that you all are helping us bring awareness to this issue. The good news, as you read in the proclamation, is that it is a 100% preventable death. And with swim lessons and water safety education, 88% of those drowning deaths can go down. So, there is some good news. The Children's Board has made an effort in the past five years and upped the funding that we put behind our mobile swim program by a quarter of a million dollars this past fiscal year. We're so excited to be partnering up with Card USF to make sure that the special needs piece is being adhered to in our water safety program. And then, of course, we could not do this without Safe Kids Tampa Bay and helping us get the message out to families. But, we are more than welcome to welcome Josh the Otter, who's been welcomed a couple times today. He basically is a tool and a resource for children to learn how to flip over on their back and call for help. So he's truly helping us make sure that water safety education at those very, very fundamental things can be taught to children. So, thank you again, Madam Mayor.
Very good, Starey. Thank you.
We'll take a picture.
He couldn't have said it any better himself. Josh has some new fans tonight. We love you so much, Josh.
Josh has some fans. This is gonna be a tough act to follow, Chief Kemp. There's more certificates. Oh, they got them. And we thank Focus Academy and all the parents for being here this evening. It was a joy to celebrate you. If Chief Kemp would please come to the podium. And Chief, as you were waving goodbye to Josh the Otter, I said, "That's a hard act to follow."
Too hard act, yeah.
Chief, a proclamation of the City of Temple Terrace. Whereas, this year's National EMS Week's theme is "Beyond the Call." And emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of the Temple Terrace Fire Department, firefighter, EMS responders, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, medical directors, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And the members of our fire department, EMT paramedics, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Mel Herado, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. First off, if I could just take a second, and I know they're gone, but those kids at Focus Academy are just, they come in every two weeks and clean and talk to us. And it's just, it's amazing what they have done for my personnel, and we love them to death. And we'll actually be at their school Friday, it's their water day. So they're excited about that, and I think we have just as much fun. I also want to say real quick, the children's, we were just talking about children drowning. One of the things I would really like to say, and I've unfortunately been to too many of those, what people don't realize is we're the child death, swimming accidents, water accidents of the nation, state of Florida. And what happens a lot of times, it's not when a child is alone or they walk off. Over 50% of the time, it's when they're in a gathering, and everybody else thinks they're watching the children, or watching their child. And you have got to have a designated person for each child that is capable and is willing to watch those kids, because, you know, we've been to homes where there's 50 people in the backyard, and it happens. So please, there's nothing worse than experiencing something like that. I also, I wanted to thank a few people for this EMS proclamation. One is, I want to go back to 1986, and I want to thank the city council. Back in 86, they made, I'm sure, a tough decision at that time to allow our firefighters and paramedics to run our own EMS transport service. At that time, the county was in our stations and ran the transport, and we felt as though that we could put a few more people in service and train our people. And since 1986, we've been transporting both BLS and ALS patients here in the city of Temple Terrace. So, without the fortitude back in 1986, we would not be doing that. I also want to thank the leadership of our medical director, who, as you know, was here almost two years ago when she won the State of Florida Medical Director of the Year. And this year, through Team Health, she was awarded alongside with 11 other physicians throughout the nation with their Medical Director of the Year award, recognizing them for their exemplary service to hospital and prehospital care, and for their outstanding leadership. So, Brooke Shepherd is such a strong leader and teacher for our firefighter, paramedics that provide EMS to the residents and visitors here in Temple Terrace. And lastly, I want to thank the people that I work with on a daily basis and work for you 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to provide this EMS patient care, which is about 80% of our call volume currently. So, these firefighters and paramedics make me proud every single day. So, thank you so much for this proclamation, it means a lot.
And as I come down with the proclamation, Chief, would you share a bit of who was honored today at the luncheon? And even include one family that was especially honored with a Fulbright scholarship.
Oh, great, yeah, so Christopher D'Amico was today at the Sykes Luncheon, I believe. Each of you have probably been before. Christopher D'Amico is one of our engineers, was awarded Firefighter of the Year this year for the City of Temple Terrace. And he's just an exemplary employee, and it goes above and beyond every single day. And then Scott Merley, who's my Division Chief of Operations, his son received the Sykes, Koi Sykes Scholarship Award, and he'll be going to University of South Florida studying biometric gold something a lot smarter than I am. biometric gold, something a lot smarter than I am. But it's some type of biology, biometric engineering, I think. So, we're extremely proud. This is the second time one of our employees has been awarded this award. He was one of the lower GPAs. I think some people had an eight-point something, literally eight. He was 3.9, which I would have loved to have gotten that in high school. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Chief.
Counsel, there are two vacancies on the Board of Adjustment. The city received three applications from Melissa Decambra, David Gennissing, and Craig Wells. Melissa Decambra and David Gennissing, terms have expired, and they are eligible to serve an additional three years. Are there any applicants who are in attendance who would like to address counsel? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm Craig Wells, 12207 Brightwater Boulevard. A little bit about myself, I've been a professional engineer for 25 years. I started my career with the city of Farmington Hills in metro Detroit. And my first job was to sit on the planning commission as their engineering representative. So, for four years, I dealt with developers and the rules, regulations, making sure they fit, explain those to them, help them through them, help council people. So, I'm very used to what you do. After that, for the next 10 years, I worked in land development all over the country. I worked for a nationwide firm. I did a lot of Walmarts, Targets, big DRIs, PUDs, gas stations, everything else. I worked in Michigan, Ohio, Florida, Georgia, Texas, Washington, Wyoming, worked all over. Everywhere we went, we had new rules and regulations to meet. So, it was important to understand those, understand very quickly, understand what makes those things tick. I also spent six years in military active duty. I spent six years in the United States Navy and then five years in the reserves. So, I've got 11 years total service. I currently, yeah, I'm at Hazen and Sawyer. I'm a vice president there, and I'm in charge, I'm the national lead for climate resilience for water and wastewater infrastructure. My wife and I have lived here in Temple Terrace since October 2014. In the past, volunteering and being part of the community, we love Temple Terrace. It's been a great move for us. We lived in South Tampa before. We really like it here. We like how personal everybody is and what's going on here. We've talked quite a bit about how we could help, how we could get involved. I went to the website and saw that you needed somebody on the Board of Adjustment. I also served in a very similar position when I lived in Michigan from Traverse City, if anybody knows the area. And I was on the Grand Traverse County Construction Board of Appeals for three years. I did almost exactly what you're looking at in the Board of Appeals. What else can I tell you about me? I think that's it. I mean, I've served my whole life, volunteered, always looking for opportunities, volunteer. I'd like to be on the board and help make Temple Terrace a better place. So, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Sure to appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Are any of our other applicants present this evening? Would you like to address counsel? Okay, thank you very much for being here this evening. Counsel, each member has a ballot. I would ask you to vote, and then please pass your ballot down to the city clerk.
One vote for Melissa and one for David. One for Melissa and one for Craig. And one for Melissa and one for David. So, we have a four for Melissa and three for David and three for Craig.
Counsel, you should have a second ballot available. There will be a second ballot and a runoff ballot for David Gennissing and Craig Wells.
You're just doing Craig and...
Just the two guys.
It's a runoff. It's between David and Craig.
So, one for Craig. One for David. One for Craig. Another one for Craig. And one for David. So, it'd be Melissa and Craig.
Congratulations, Melissa Decambria and Craig Wells. I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Craig Wells and Melissa Decambra of the Board of Adjustment for terms extending from May 21, 2019 to May 21, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion among counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Motion carries, and thank you both for your willingness to serve. If the minutes of May 7, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
We have a motion, do we, we have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. I do not have any cards before me this evening. Are there any, are there any citizens who would like to? Appears there are none. Consent agenda, city manager will explain the item listed on the consent agenda. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a very simple resolution here on the consent agenda this evening, and it has, involves redesignating funds in the amount of $1,500 from the council, city council's goal-setting strategic planning account to the mayor's youth leadership account. Each year, council contracts with a facilitator to hold our goal-setting sessions in May. In 2017, the city actually contracted with the Profitable Group to conduct that strategic session. It is a four-hour session that's located offsite, and it gives council and administration the ability to start setting some goals for the previous, for the upcoming year. As an initiative, the mayor, our mayor established the Youth Leadership Council to encourage the youth leaders to participate in our civic and leadership and community service programs that we have all around our town. The mayor's youth leadership obviously seeks sponsorship investments for that. The Profitable Group is certainly wishing to receive these funds. It is something that we have done previously in previous years. I don't know that it would be inappropriate to do it again this year. So, with that, the resolution stands for approval. I recommend that we do this.
Thank you, city manager Stevenson. I would ask if there are any persons from the public wishing to address counsel on this item. Seeing none of the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8A, a resolution approving the purchase of police department replacement laptop computers for calendar year 2019. Bob Keel, Information Technology Director, will explain. Mr. Keel.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm here tonight to get your approval on a resolution for a purchase of 43 lapbook, I should say, laptop computers for our police patrol division. This was a coordinated effort between Information Technologies and a small group of police officers to make decisions on what features, what brands, what models of computers they want to have in their vehicles. What we had all agreed to was a number of 42 Panasonic CF-54 Tough Book computers and one Panasonic CF-33 Tough Book computer, 43 Lindt car charger units, and five years of hardware maintenance for all laptop equipment that will be covered under the Panasonic Public Sector Service Package. This will be purchased through Insight Public Sector. We're piggybacking on a State of Florida master agreement, MNWNC-124, State of Florida, PA number 43211500, WSCA 15ACS. The funding for this purchase will be fully funded by the account number 0011121513.64-23. The total amount of the purchase is going to be $143,053. And as I had mentioned, it's fully funded by funds that were put in the fiscal year budget 2018-2019. Stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. And prior to any questions, I would ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item. Seeing none counsel questions, first, Councilman Schisler, and then Councilman Ross.
Yes, I'm in favor of this. What's going to happen, what are we replacing? How many?
We're replacing roughly 43 Panasonic models that were purchased in 2014.
What was the plan for those? Are they destroyed?
They will be, well, what we do is we do a Department of Defense wipe on the hard drives.
Right.
And then, we send them to an e-recycling company who actually recycles all of the parts.
Well, is this something that maybe we could donate to the Boys and Girls Club? I'm sure a computer lab...
It's something that could possibly be donated. We have looked at donation to other organizations in the past, but typically, the equipment is so outdated, and it's not included with any type of software. And it puts the burden then on the organization that receives them to load software, et cetera. So, it's not been a typical move for us, but I mean, we will do whatever is the council's, you know, direction.
Well, I'm not saying that we should, we need to do that. I'm just saying, is it an option that the Boys and Girls Club might find an altern, you know, alternate sourcing for this, for this software, and give them a nice little computer lab up there?
Yes, we, several of the units, I would say, are subpar performing right now. So, you know, unfortunately, we would love to give them, you know, state-of-the-art equipment, but as these units have aged over the last five years, we're starting to see more and more strange anomalies going on with some of the equipment.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Question, and these are, Gil, these are different than normal laptops, too. They're pretty beat up. These are out in the weather, they're beat up all over the place. I did have a question. Who's getting the CF-33? Is that for a marine officer?
That is for a marine officer. It's a little bit more ruggedized and weather resistant than the other.
Yeah, I just wondered who was, and the only thing that made sense to me was a marine officer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, counsel? Seeing no other questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the purchase of police department replacement laptop computers for 2019.
Moved to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting? Councilman Ross.
I have a carryover business, but it's from like two meetings ago. Does that fit better here or under new business?
We're here, so would you like to go here, sir?
Okay. For procedurally, in April, we laid a voluntary annexation petition on the table. Don't we need a motion to take that back off the table?
I believe that is calendared for our next meeting. Am I correct? Is that on our June 4th agenda?
We will be bringing it down to June 4th in order to take that back off the table and do a date certain. We're looking at doing it June 18th, date certain. The applicant is out of town on the 4th.
That's fine, but we don't, by parliamentary procedure, we don't need a motion to remove it from the table? I thought we did.
We will ask that to be done on the 4th.
It'll be done on the 4th. I misspoke, I apologize.
That'll give us enough.
It's the 18th where it's scheduled to come back before us, so it will be on the 4th that we do that, sir. Apologies.
That, timing-wise, will be good for us because that'll give us time to advertise it again.
That's fine, thank you. Oh, I did, no, listen to me.
Is there any other counsel business? New business, we will start with Hillsborough County Mosquito Control Update. Ron Montgomery, Operation Superintendent and Interim Director, and Sarah Schaefer, Entomologist, will be speaking on our mosquito control. Thank you both for being here this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. On behalf of Hillsborough County Mosquito Management, we're very grateful to be able to come to the city of Temple Terrace, give you an update on mosquito management activities this year and what we've got going forward. I brought with me staff entomologist Sarah Schaefer. She's got a PowerPoint presentation she's going to go through. At the conclusion, we'll answer any questions you might have about mosquitoes. We can talk about them all night because that's what we do. So, once again, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Sarah.
So, I guess, oh, there we are. So, a little bit just about what we do. I think there's a lot that goes on in the background at mosquito management services that a lot of the general public doesn't know, and I'd like to just kind of quickly rush through that and then maybe open it up to more of a dialogue. So, there it is. Very good. So, Hillsborough County, Florida, over square miles of land with 24 square miles of inland water, 76 miles of coastline. That basically means we are dealing with a lot of salt marsh mosquitoes. With roughly 52 inches of rain per year, we serve in addition to, we serve in addition to Temple Terrace, you know, 1.4 million residents. 68% of our population of Hillsborough County is actually in an unincorporated area. But, of course, we also serve the three cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City, along with 21 million annual visitors to places like Busch Gardens and various other nature parks here. Well, so, there we go. So, we are housed under Hillsborough County Department of Public Works, which is property tax-funded. We have roughly 18 full-time staff. That number fluctuates just a little bit. We have sites that we consistently monitor along the coastlines as well as inland, with more than 65 surveillance traps at our disposal, various types for depending on what we are, what species we're trying to look at and what stage of their life. We also have an onsite identification lab and several pieces of specialized trucks, ATVs, and a helicopter for aerial larva sighting missions. Now, mosquitoes, feel like it's important to kind of go over this because a lot of people are very bothered by mosquitoes but don't necessarily know a whole lot about them. They represent actually not one species but an entire taxonomic family with more than 3,500 species worldwide. We deal with more than 80 of them here in Florida, and about 45 or so species are present in Hillsborough County. Not all of them bite, and some of them really don't prefer humans all that much, and so we don't necessarily worry about them as much as we would others. You might be able to see it there, the leir shape. Is this, there it is. Nope, it won't go on the screen. That's okay. The upper left corner, the leir shape, that is the mosquito of primary public health concern that we have typically. That's Aedes aegypti, the yellow fever mosquito, which also transmits Dengue, Chikungunya, and Zika. This is one that is also, probably we have the most stability to control by simply tipping containers because it is a container-breeding mosquito specifically that is very, that just, it likes to feed on humans by preference. Below that, kind of a more nondescript one, that's Nygrapalpus. That one vectors St. Louis encephalitis. But, again, fortunately, it doesn't really seem to prefer humans that much, and that virus tends to be maintained in a mosquito-bird cycle. Next to that one, that's Anopheles crucians, and that's probably what generates a lot of calls here in the Temple Terrace area. That one is historically a vector for malaria, but fortunately, we don't have to worry about that too much in the present day. Finally, Mansonia, also probably one that generates a number of calls. It's a pretty aggressive and a little bit more of a general feeder. Finally, the one that you see placed on the hand there is actually a... Finally, the one that you see placed on the hand there is actually a beneficial mosquito, as it does not actually take a blood meal, and its larvae actually eat the larvae of these others that do bite humans and our pets. A little bit about the mosquito life cycle. The adult female, of course, lays her eggs either in a container, on the surface of water, or on damp soil, where it is prone to flooding. Very important about the mosquito life cycle, the female is the only one that actually takes a blood meal, and she does this to nourish her eggs while they're in development. Otherwise, if they didn't, otherwise they're nectar feeders, both male and female. Once the eggs flood, they hatch out into larvae and progress into four instars before pupating, and then emerging out as adults. We like to get them when they're at that larval stage, and that's what a lot of our operations actually focus on day-to-day. We do have a team dedicated to property inspections, but most of our guys are out there just finding larvae in water puddles wherever they might be, retention ponds, and just applying the appropriate larvicide. Now, on my side, I'm more in the surveillance department. You can see maybe a little bit, it's a little bit, just wanted to kind of get a general idea of just how diverse our landscape really is, and how much it's changing. We keep twenty-seven routine community traps that are baited with CO2 to mimic the CO2 that we give off. They're dry ice. They are set once a week. Mosquitoes are identified and counted up by surveillance staff, and recommendations for area treatment is based on these species and quantity of a particular mosquito. We also have a few blue points that might not be quite as relevant to this community. Those are more targeting our salt marsh mosquitoes that hatch out in very high numbers and cause a good deal of headache along the coastline. We also monitor for those mosquito-bird cycles with sentinel chickens. We have ten sentinel chicken flocks with roughly six birds at a site. Blood's drawn to Marder for arboviruses once a week. These include West Nile virus, St. Louis encephalitis, Eastern equine encephalitis, and Highlands J. virus. Eastern equine encephalitis is probably the most deadly form, but fortunately, we don't see a whole lot of that kind of activity in Hillsborough County. And not all of these species will vector the disease, so it tends to be more the Culex species that we're usually looking at. Now, these are, of course, I'm sorry, you might not be able to see them as well. The, these are the counts on the right-hand side for Temple Terrace as of last week, from our surveillance trap over there, kind of towards Boy Scout Campus where we keep that one. The large bar that you're seeing right there is Culex erraticus. It's more of a general species. They don't typically bite humans a whole lot, and in terms of disease, they do also vector Eastern equine encephalitis, but again, we don't see a whole lot of that activity here. So it's very fortunate. And again, probably what is generating a lot of calls over the wintertime was that species Anopheles crucians, which is starting to go down just a little bit in some areas. This is a whole piece of legalese, basically just detailing exactly what we need in order to carry out a large-scale treatment. Basically, we have to see a certain increase in landing rate counts. We have to, it has to show by trap just how many, so, you know, we can't just go out and apply a product willy-nilly. That's just kind of what the, what I'm kind of trying to get at with this. It's, it's very detailed under 388, Chapter 388 of the Florida statutes. These are some of our current operations, or at least they were current as of last week. The blue diamonds represent spray requests. As you can see, we had quite a good number down there at Apollo Beach, and again, up there at around Detroitdale area, in Town and Country. We don't see a whole lot right now in Temple Terrace, and we keep hearing that there might be some complaints, or we had been hearing that, and I think that part of it might be that folks are just not sure who to reach out to in that case, because of course, we're the only ones among the cities that are providing any kind of mosquito control services. So, close it out with a number that I think that residents could, should be able to call if they would like to submit a spray request. We also, I also put our website down there. They can also, that they can actually submit it electronically as well, so they don't have to call the phone number. The phone number, 813-635-5400, is actually Public Health, Public Works' general line. So that's also for downed, downed road signs, potholes, anything else that might be going wrong. But they can also spray, view upcoming spray missions. We do have that link up there, portal, and ArcGIS has done wonders for us, having that tool present. I do like to emphasize, however, that for us to best serve everybody in Hillsborough County, because we, again, 1.4 million residents, we're not able to, when people call us and kind of expecting private pest control kind of services, unfortunately, that is just not something that is in the scope of what we're able to offer, because we are really, we need to be allocating our resources to treating all property and larger, getting at the larger problem. And any kind of spray requests are going to be subject to review by our inspectors, who are licensed through the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to apply these restricted-use pesticides. Label is the law. So I would like to conclude and open it up.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer and Mr. Montgomery, for being with us this evening. Council, comments, questions? Mr. Schisler?
Oh, Ms. Donahue? Standing water. So you say that, you know, if the water is also in the ground, you don't mean that if I flushed out the bromeliads, that the eggs have gone to the ground? That's the end of them, right? What do you recommend for that type of?
Well, that's a great question. Thank you for asking. Bromeliads are a very big challenge for us, because they're, they're basically a container, but they're a natural container. Bromeliads in tree holes. Those yellow fever mosquitoes have taken bromeliads as their natural habitat to develop their larvae. So anything short of removing the bromeliads, which is the best way to control the mosquitoes, but not always a good sell to the public, we encourage you to rinse out the water, rinse out the sockets. That'll flush the larvae out. It might flush the eggs out. It might not. It depends. But it will certainly get the larvae out, and if you do that every seven or eight, ten days, you're, you're gonna definitely reduce the mosquitoes that are coming out of those bromeliads.
Thank you.
How much spraying? How much spraying goes on in a, in a regular basis? I mean, does it, is it require a special request? I mean, years ago in Temple Terrace, we, the mosquito truck came around on a regu, on a routine basis, okay? I haven't seen any spraying in probably five years minimum, at least in this area. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I'm just saying, what I, you know, from recollection.
All right, Gil, I'm about to, I'm about to give you some real heavy-duty stuff here, okay? What you just identified represents a very successful mosquito control for Temple Terrace, okay? Those spray trucks that you see at night, you don't want those. You don't want those trucks out. They spray a broad spectrum insecticide that doesn't just impact mosquitoes. It impacts a lot of beneficial insects. So we spray during the day. Most of our treatments are done during the day, where we're looking for the stagnant water where the larvae develop. We have a catalog now of almost 10,000 sites that we've mapped out, that we routinely inspect and treat to try to control the mosquitoes before they're flying around. So you said you haven't seen the truck in five years, which sounds like it's bad, but it's actually good. That means it's working. That means it's working. We have to spray less. Well, the data supports that Temple Terrace, let me tell you, there are some places you don't want to live in Hillsborough County.
Oh, sure.
For mosquitoes. Temple Terrace is not one of them. Temple Terrace has got pretty good natural drainage. Mosquitoes aren't really as bad as we see in some areas. Some areas, give you, for instance, last week, one of my texts was out. Eighteen mile-an-hour steady wind in the middle of the day was getting a hundred mosquitoes a minute landing on them. Okay, that's, that's the kind of battles that we face.
Don't disagree with that.
Yeah, so.
But there's parts of Temple Terrace where we have youth activities going on in the early evening, and you, everybody just stands around slapping their legs, slapping their arms, and we're talking dry season. So, I mean, it's, it, and they look at you, and you know, we're, our constituents, hey, what's with the mosquitoes? Well, they're, you know, we're gonna need a blood transfusion before we're done with here tonight.
I will tell you, I have a little good news. I did bring a case of mosquito repellent with me, which I'm gonna leave at the back. Help yourself to it.
Exactly.
And that's really a message that the public needs to understand. If they're, if you're gonna be out at sunset with shorts on and short sleeves, you're gonna encounter mosquitoes. There's just no way we'll ever be that good at reducing mosquitoes. Now, you mentioned the dry season. We do see some areas where irrigation, automatic sprinklers, are flooding out areas, usually in the road, the catch basins, and we get some mosquitoes. The bromeliads might be under irrigation, and, and so it really takes a community effort to make a big difference. But mosquitoes are so adaptive. They've adapted to every type of habitat except moving water. I mean, they have really gotten smart about it. So it's, it's a real challenge for us. But you're right. You're right. We have sprayed a lot, though. We just sprayed a couple weeks ago. And I know, we have every record, but we spray, we do spray still.
Mr. Stevenson, absolutely.
We appreciate you guys being here. Certainly, if I can ask just a couple of questions, this from a person. I know everybody here deals with mosquitoes. We all have this problem. But if in fact you have your property, and you're taking care of standing water on your property with containers or bromeliads or whatever, what if you've got a neighbor that refuses to do some of this? And, I mean, short of calling code enforcement, the problem with that is, is a lot of times, if you have a neighbor that doesn't answer the door, you guys can't, can't gain access. How do you deal with that?
Well, Sarah had one slide up there that showed the law, the mosquito laws in Florida. It's Chapter 38, 388 of the Florida statutes, and it's Rule 5E13 of the Administrative Rules. They tell us what we can do legally as a mosquito control program. We can't go on private property without, without permission. We just can't do it.
So what's, what's the alternative? I mean, there's gotta be something to.
Code enforcement.
You can't have two people on either side of you taking care of trying to control mosquitoes, and yet you've got a neighbor that won't let you on the property, and they really don't care.
Charles, it's a very common problem that we run into all the time. It's not always just two neighbors. Sometimes it's a whole block. It's impacted by somebody that has a lot of containers, boats, tires, and the mosquitoes will proliferate, and they'll migrate out. They're looking, they're seeking blood.
And they don't know fence lines.
No, no, they don't. They don't know the county line either. A lot of them come from Pasco County, we're pretty sure.
Well, yes. Ron, we appreciate you guys being here, and I know this is, this is a difficult job. I mean, to control these mosquitoes. Certainly, I think everybody can do what they can in order to help that. What, what I need some help with is when residents call my office and say mosquitoes are really bad, what can I do to refer them to you guys, and what, what's the process for them to get some attention from the county? Do you guys come out and set a trap? Do you guys come and send somebody out to see how many bites they get in a, in an hour? Tell me a little bit about how you guys handle a complaint.
It's, it's, we have a lot of data coming in. That phone call, first of all, the phone number is 635-5400. If you say you have a mosquito problem, they're gonna ask you, do you want a spray truck? Do you want to have your property inspected, or are you reporting some stagnant water that you're concerned about? Hopefully, it's not in your neighbor's yard, because we just talked about that. But we'll send somebody out to evaluate the issue. Now, if we, if our trap that we have in Temple Terrace that we, we run every week, if it's showing an increased population of biting mosquitoes, and then we see a bunch of calls coming in, we have the information we need then, and we'll put the truck out. That's pretty much how we, we document the need, we're justified, we follow the law, we're, we're good to go. If we see a lot of, if we see a slight increase and people aren't calling yet, we're gonna hold off on the truck, only because it's better for the environment, unless there's a public health threat. Just to give you some idea, just this week alone, we responded to a case of malaria that was imported from West Africa, and a case of Zika that was reported from, I can't remember where that's from. Cuba, I believe. That's our first priority, is protecting the human health of our public. Second is to improve the quality of life, and, you know, we all want to enjoy the outdoors. That's why we live here. But we will come out and either inspect, or definitely knock on the door, talk to the folks, leave a door hanger if they're not home. A lot of times, we find that they have the mosquitoes coming from their own containers that they're not aware of, and sometimes that's the end of it. They figure that out, they turn them over. Sometimes we come back, year after year after year, same container.
I know this is somewhat of a loaded question, but if somebody calls with a complaint, how long does it take you guys to respond?
Well, we try to get out.
Do you respond to every phone call that you get?
I'm sorry?
Do you respond to every phone call?
We do.
Okay.
Right. We will contact the person immediately by email, and let them know that we're working on their case. Typically, within fourteen working days, the case is closed. That's our, that's our high watermark. This time of year, we're going within four or five days. Within four or five days, we've, we've addressed the issue.
Thank you.
That's helpful, that's helpful to pass on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron and Sarah, for being here this evening. And, and Mr. Stevenson, I don't know if this would be a question for Ron and Sarah, or it might be for, for Mr. Tinch or Mr. LeBlanc. For our retention ponds around the terrace, that's City of Temple Terrace's responsibility for us to make sure the mosquito control around retention ponds, or is that something that, that Ron and Sarah do with the county?
We can get some help out of county to do that. Again, we're not, we're not set up to do mosquito prevention, but.
So we have you covered.
Okay, so you do all of our retention ponds?
Retention ponds typically don't produce a lot of mosquitoes unless they're void of any predators. If they're, if the water's really stagnant, then you might have mosquitoes, and we may actually introduce mosquito fish into the pond as a source of biological control, and so hopefully, we only go one time.
We, we have a few wet ponds. Most of our ponds are dry. Really don't hold water, but we do have a few of them. Well, that's a good point.
It was just something, as, as Ron and Sarah were talking, I was thinking about Councilman Schisler.
While I got you here, the very good presentation, there was a lot about mosquitoes that I had no clue about, so that, which is good. But if I could just put a bug in your ear, south of Bullard, the closer you get to the river, the worse it is. It's, it's, and I know the ground is very, very saturated down there, and it'll, and only gonna get worse through, through the summer.
Well, I'll tell you this. I know exactly why that is. There is a one mosquito. I talked about how adaptive they are. There's one species, Sarah mentioned it, Mansonia. As a larvae, it attaches its air tube to the roots of plants, usually in a river. It's usually water lettuce, and they breathe their air through the plant underwater. So when we go in there dipping around, we can't, we don't find them until they hatch off. Those, we do need to spray with a truck. It's really our only choice at this point.
South of Bullard is, and it, all, the closer you get to the river, the worse it is, but it's pretty bad down there.
635-5400. We'll leave the repellent here. We're here for everybody. This is what we do, and we're happy to come out anytime to talk about it.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
And prior to continuing, prior to continuing with new business, I would like to take a moment to congratulate Councilman Schisler on being named Board Secretary of Heart. Congratulations, Councilman Schisler, and I would ask if there's any additional new business to come. Councilman Ross, and then Councilman Schisler.
Just one quick thing. We heard from Chief Kemp already about the Hero's Luncheon today, and the award that was bestowed upon firefighter engineer Chris D'Amico, and we talked about Craig Murley's scholarship. One more thing to add to that is that our Police Corporal Adam Liebowitz was named as our Police Department Hero of the Year for 2019, which is a remarkable accomplishment. As you know, with a background in law enforcement, I can, that's a remarkable accomplishment to get Officer of the Year. It's almost unheard of to get that twice in a career, and Corporal Liebowitz has done that. And he's a fairly young officer, so that, that's really, really remarkable for somebody to get Officer of the Year twice in one year. So Chief, please pass along our congratulations to him for a job well done.
Thank you. Councilman Schisler?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The recent legislative session that just ended, they did some, they passed some laws regarding the charter amendments, or the state charter amendments. Are we gonna be doing ours soon? I mean, we have some that need to take effect here in the next year or so. So what's the, do we have a timetable as to when the, when we're going to see resolutions and so forth that were impacted by the charter review approvals in November? I mean, to put you on the spot, I'm just, it's just, if not, if, if we haven't thought about it, we need to, we need to do something soon.
Ratify it? To ratify the vote?
No, not to ratify the vote, but to put the, we have to codify the new legislation. If it just doesn't happen, we gotta do resolutions.
Coincidentally, I had that conversation with my assistant here today, that we need to find out. You know, I, I think last week I passed. You know, I, I think last week I passed on to you a, a summary, if you would, from League of Cities that says, "Pass the Senate, didn't pass the House, pass the House, pass the Senate." And there's, there's all these bills that were there, and really, none of them become law until the governor signs them. So, I, I am gonna be looking, I'm going off next week to the City Managers Conference. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of discussion about, where are we with some of these bills? Certainly, I've asked, again, my, my assistant to kinda start looking into which ones have been really enacted as a law. If we have to take some, some measures in order to enact some kind of changes, we'll certainly do that. I, I'm fairly certain that the tree ordinance didn't make it through to the governor's office. The Airbnb didn't make it to the governor's office, they never passed committee, so, in either House or the Senate. So, those were the two that were particular of interest to me, 'cause that really affected our ability. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we brought an Airbnb ordinance to you. I didn't want to bring that back to you until we knew whether or not it was gonna be preempted by the state. So, now that it did not pass, we'll be bringing that ordinance back to you, and if there's other items that we need to address once they pass, the ones that did get passed, both House and Senate, and get signed by the governor, we'll, we'll act accordingly.
Well, just so we're on the same page, I'm, I'm talking about the structural changes from the, from the referendums, from the charter review for the City of Temple Terrace. The, the structure of council changes...
Oh, you're talking, okay, the ones that we did.
The ones that we did.
We did, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the ones that we did.
I'm sorry.
I think we still have to have resolutions that, that actually make those happen date certain.
Well, that's what I said, ratify the vote, because...
Well, the vote's been ratified, we can't ratify the vote, and we have to codify the vote.
Ms. Shon?
There, there were some things that had been, I think it was question number three, there were some things that had been approved by the voters for you all to do. Those are what I kind of consider housekeeping issues with our charter. It just is finding the right meeting to bring them to you to get that done, and you can make those changes at a meeting. As far as the one concerning the change with the structure of council, with that being approved by the voters, it's essentially, it is part of our charter now. I don't know whether, if Cheryl, I'd have to defer to the clerk now, whether that, whether an actual change in the charter itself has become codified and been recorded anywhere.
I haven't sent it in to be changed the charter yet, because it would effectively change the charter as of now, change the structure of council as of now.
Okay.
Which is...
Which we were expecting that this would, would take place in the next election cycle after the vote, so, and we didn't, and I guess we talked about it, we didn't wanna go ahead and have it codified without those housekeeping things also changed at the same time, so.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Well, just kind of a related question for the clerk and the attorney, is I had asked recently for a copy of the new revised charter, even though it doesn't take effect until sometime from now, but I was told that we haven't written that document yet, and I don't know what the procedures for filing it, but they have an effective date on it, so if we can't write, 'cause I'd like to see what it looks like. You know, I mean, I read the, obviously, I read the amendments, and I read the redline versions and all of that, but I've never, I'd like to have a, a version of what the charter is going to look like in 2020, and we don't have that? We can't get that until then?
I can send it in to them, the other ones that actually update it.
Who, who's them?
MCCI, the municipal code, and does it for us. But once they do that, then it actually is updating the code. And I didn't want to cause any confusion.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't wanna do that, 'cause it doesn't take effect until 2020.
No, we can, we can create one, we'll put out one in-house and cut into the final version with the changes in it, except for the housekeeping ones, which I'll be happy to bring to you. I just need to go through what the changes were that you wanted to make, you know, changing all, making it gender neutral, things like that. I can put that in front of you at whatever council meeting, we can get that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business to come before council? With that, we will go to the City Managers' report. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just kind of a, an update on some issues that we've got coming up here. We need to engage in a shade meeting in order to talk about police contract. I would, I would like to do that on July 2nd meeting. If everyone is gonna be here, it would be, I think Andy, you're gone.
I'm gone.
I mean, Jeannie had shared everybody's summer calendar with me. There's about three days out of two months that everybody is here, so.
Can't we call, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
We, we...
Can we call the shade meeting just on a...
We could, we could schedule a, a special meeting, yes, if you would prefer to do that.
You have three whole days.
I have three whole days.
I really, if, if possible, I would really like to be here for that meeting.
I think that those three days, if I'm not mistaken, are in the middle of July.
I'm thinking that, I've got that real quick. That meeting should only take 45 minutes probably, right?
At the most. I mean, we, I was hoping to schedule no more than an hour, and we'd do it before a regular meeting. The three days that I've got, where all of you are here. Actually, perhaps, and I guess I will have to check with our staff, but June 18th, which is a meeting prior to that, we could possibly put it together then, I think everybody's here then. I will, I will get back to you, and we've got, we've got some time. We can do this at our next meeting and schedule it on the 18th, that will work for everybody.
Prior to council.
Prior to council. We'll, we'll need just an hour. I don't think it'll take any more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
I will do that. Come, our meeting in, on June 4th, we will have a presentation by an organization to help identify human trafficking issues. It is, we've had a few conversations with this individual that works for this company, and it is something that I think that everybody should be made aware of, and we should put some emphasis on. We have some training coming up from this company to, for everyone that would care to join, I would invite council to come and see it. There's June 6th, there's a session at 10 o'clock, and there's a session at 1 o'clock. If you, if your calendars allow you, I think it'll be well worth your time. We're gonna start running some of our staff. Our police department has already gone through about five sessions with this. And speaking with Ken Albano today, he certainly thinks it's well worth the information. We're gonna get as many as our employees that deal with the public, and certainly with children involved with some of this training, just to, again, more of an awareness kinda deal. But we will be looking to support this initiative by this company.
Times for the training?
I'm sorry?
Times for the training?
It will be at 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM. It'll be both same session, so you can attend either or. It will be here in, here in the chamber on that June 6th date. We would encourage you to come. It's, we've had a presentation, the mayor and I have already received a presentation out of this company, and it's just, it's pretty gut-wrenching, some of the stuff that goes on, and I think becoming more aware of it would certainly go a long way for all of us. On June 11th, the Hillsborough County School District is, has asked to use our chamber to run their school board meeting. They're trying to get out into the community. It's June 11th. We will, they will be holding their meeting from 4:00 until 7:00 PM. It's a regular meeting that they're just trying to get out into the community. We will certainly encourage our residents to come out and kinda listen into, to the business that they handle. We're looking at having a CRA meeting on June 4th. And we have three, if not four, presentations to make to you concerning our, our recent advertisement of additional property down there that we've got some interest in developers buying and developing. Enigma did close last Friday. We applied another $1.4 million out of those proceeds to the $10 million loan, with a net effect of, as, just with those two loans being, those two closings being applied, let me get you a good number here. It made a significant difference to the interest that we're paying on a yearly basis, and I'm not quite sure what I did to my piece of paper. We're probably looking at, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember correctly, it's about $113,000 savings during the course of the year, and certainly, we're looking, here we go, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Our interest is reduced, has been reduced to about $18,000 per month from $23,000 a month, about $113,000 savings if we continue with the direction we're going. Certainly, we have some of these other settlements, or some of these other sales that we're looking to do between now and then. We're still continuing to work on two site plans, one from Richmond and one from Paragon in, in the system. They've been back and forth a couple of times, trying to get those through the DRC process. They are moving forward. Enigma with them just closing, I'm not quite sure what their plan is to bring forward site plans, but I, I think that they're anxious to get busy with something as well, to that big old ugly gray building that's been sitting there forever, so.
Did they put in the palm trees?
I'm sorry?
Did they put in the palm trees?
No, those palm trees that you see, if you remember correctly, in our last budget season, we talked about replacing some palm trees, that we're losing some of the majule palms. That's part of the $10,000 that was actually assigned to replacing trees down there. We've, we put some crepe myrtles in as well, and some palm trees to try to replace the ones that have been dying over the years, so, they're still candled, but they'll look good once they get cut up and spread out, so. I think we've, we've made a different choice in species of palm that will last us, so. And last but not least, if I may, I know we had a successful Brew Fest this weekend, I think the biggest ever. Certainly, it's a great event. We also had the event of the street art. We were able to, with your permission, we've got a short video that Brian Hill, our man in a sound booth, has. If we can show that now, Brian, that would be great.